Please rise.
Thank you so much council for having me here, it's an honor. If everyone would bow with me for a word of prayer. Almighty God, thank you deeply on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening for their dedication, for their concern for our El Segundo community. And I thank you Lord for your many blessings, both those known and unknown. Thank you for the precious freedoms that we all enjoy and let us not take those freedoms lightly. Let us also not forget that those freedoms are not divorced from our responsibilities to properly steward our lives and care for one another. So thank you gracious Lord for your, our governing leaders we have here with us, our law enforcement, our fire and rescue, our business leaders, our educators, our city officials and our citizens who seek to make our city a safe, productive, vibrant and thriving beacon. Thank you that in your scriptures is stated clearly that government, governing bodies on earth are created for the very purpose of upholding your standards, committing the good and admonishing the bad. So gracious Lord, as we gather this evening, ask for your guidance and especially for all of our council members here who sacrifice and serve this city, I ask that you would leave this, lead this evening's discussions and grant each person discernment and wisdom and that you would help us adhere to your good standards and that wisdom, grace and unity would be evident to all this evening. And finally, I ask that you would help us to conduct this in all meetings in such a way that you Lord are glorified and honored and that the citizens of El Segundo would be blessed as a result. And I pray these things in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Pastor Robbins and thank you Councilman Pimentel. We have, well, we got, we got several presentations this evening and I would say we got a really exciting one to start. It's great to see the chambers full of all these wonderful El Segundo volunteers and the council was thankful that we were able to come out and talk with some of you. And I think we're gonna do a presentation, right?
Yes.
And while Sean's coming up, I just want to say it was amazing getting, I think I spent only about forty minutes out there and here's what I learned in a short period of time. I learned from Tracy Miller Zarnicki that learned about the school, school race for a school candidate. I learned about what the environmental committee is up to next. I heard the, heard from Sari Brand about all the great things that are going on at the library under Melissa's leadership. I talked to Sally Martin about the incredibly big ideas coming out of arts and culture committee. Where's Conrad Hoffman? Sixteen seconds or less Rubik's Cube mastery, right here, I learned that. And he led, he led some kids in that endeavor for Camp Kawabunga over the summer. Thank you for your volunteers, starting at a young, young age, they're also a Boy Scout, great to see. And then RSVP, thank you for all you're doing to keep our safe, our streets safe. And that while there's been some inactivity lately, which is a good thing in El Segundo, they're, they're interested in changing the name, so it's no longer an R, right? Did I get this right? An R in the retired, R, R S V, Retired Service Volunteer Patrol, is that right? So we gotta come up with rebranding, right? So we get some younger folks that, that want to sign up for that as well. Anyway, I had a great time. Thank you so much for everything you're doing, probably a hundred people in the audience. That's a lot of collective hours of good that you all are doing and contributing to our great city. So thanks for all you're doing. Any thoughts from the council before Sean talks? Mr. Green, floor is yours.
Good evening Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members, thank you for having me this evening. I'm honored to be here this evening to, to honor some of, to recognize members of our community that can't be thanked enough for our volunteers, our volunteers. I found a quote that I thought was the fit for this equation. There's no limit to the amount of good that you can do if you don't care who gets the credit. This is, this is what being a volunteer truly means and this is who we are, who we are here to honor tonight. Our volunteers, our volunteers are so selfless and never worry about the credit. This is our special opportunity, give them a little credit and recognize them for their incredible service to the city of El Segundo. So after I read this, your name, can you please come up? And we're gonna show you, Darren's gonna give you a small token of our appreciation. And then council members came down for a picture afterwards. Brenda Ross. Brian Pham.
Sean, are they gonna stay up and then we'll do a photo with all of them or?
Okay. Carol Cervantes. Carol Hahn. Catherine Galanti. Cheryl Bailey. Conrad Hoffman. Corey Zupo. Dave Janta. Diane Smith. Dick Wykoff. Jackie Rosner. Joan Hobbs. Joyce Harris. Lauren Legori. Linda Monroe. Lisa Desimone. Lori Kaiser. Maria and Ed Erdley. Maurice O'Brien. And this was Mike Rotolo, this is his twenty years of service, so twenty years this year, so I want to make sure we pointed that out for Mike this year, thank you.
Nice Mike, thank you.
Mina Kerski. Nancy Jacobson. Paulo Rotolo. Sally Martin. Sari Brand. Tracy Miller Zarnicki. Vicki Harden. Neil Fallon. Mark and Marcia Marion. And then Angela Schoenbon. Come on up, who are some of the other ones we missed? So, so we'll do it by group, so why don't we start with RSVP first?
Alright, eyes, eyes to me, eyes to me. No more jibber jabber, here we go. One, two, and, one more, just for fun. Wait a minute, I need you out of the photo. And who's that back there? Alright, here we go, and one more. Alright, thank you so much.
Is there someone from RSVP that'd like to come up and say a few words? How about Friends of the Library next? We'll also do the Board of Trustees as well with you guys.
Couple of photos. Alright, here we go, guys, one, two, and, one more. Beautiful, thank you so much.
And then maybe we could bring up the outreach volunteers in the senior club?
There we go. There we go, perfect, this is great. Alright. Alright, here we go guys, and, nice smiles, one, two, and, one more. For kicks, thank you so much.
And then the next group will be our youth volunteers.
Let's see. Okay, if I can have the young lady move back a wee bit? Very good. Now where's Mr. Nickel going? Alright, right there, right there, right there, right there, that's good, that's good, that's good, everybody's looking fantastic. Alright, here we go, couple photos here, and, one, two, and, one more. Nice, nice smiles, thank you, alright.
So we're gonna do the environmental committee together with the technology committee and the youth drama volunteers. Maybe, maybe planning commission? There you go.
Alright guys, big smiles, here we go, and one more, and one more in case we blink, alright, thank you.
And then we'll do the planning commission, rec park commission, arts and culture committee?
That's it, that's it. Can I get you guys to scooch a little bit more this way? Just a scooch now, thank you. Alright, here we go. One, two, and, one more, looking good, one more, there you go, alright, thank you.
And then we've got the senior housing board and then capital improvement program advisory committee.
Army of one, I love it. Here you go, one, two, and, one more. Thank you so much. Alright, everybody's looking fantastic. Here we go, one, two. It's true. One more. And one more. Alright, thank you so much.
So once again, we want to thank everybody and one comment I want to make is that as we come up, came up for pictures, it was, it was memorable that we all are neighbors and community members and we all know each other and that's why El Segundo is such an amazing town. So thank you for your service and making us a family, because without you, we wouldn't be the El Segundo we are today.
Well said Mayor Pro Tem. Alright, next presentation is the emergency services coordinator, Rand O'Collins regarding the big shakeout. And, there he is. Randy, I must have missed it, here's another thing I learned. Randy, do you know he plays lacrosse for USC on the USC team? He's, and he's in his forties, I'm not gonna say at what point, that's incredible, I just learned that tonight.
I think they get beat by UCLA every year.
No, they beat UCLA last year.
We are undefeated against UCLA, my friend. Well, thank you Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members, thank you for having me. Today I'm just going to give a quick brief out on the upcoming drill, the great shakeout. And I'm sure it's not a strange drill to any of you, as they've been having this for many, many years now. And so it'll be going on Thursday, October eighteenth at ten eighteen, so ten eighteen, ten eighteen. And the city will be participating in the great shakeout and we have encouraged via social media as many community members as can, as we can get to participate, whether they're at school, at home, in their businesses. We'd like everybody to participate as much as possible. We'd like to encourage everybody to go to www.shakeout.org/California. There you can learn more about the, the drill and you can learn more about what to do before, during and after an earthquake. And we just want to foster that culture of preparedness here in the city. So what the city is doing in particular is we will be participating in, in the drop cover and hold on. And so at ten eighteen, as the shaking begins, or the simulated shaking begins, everybody in the city, wherever they are in their respective locations across our facilities shall do the proper immediate actions and then once after a few minutes have passed, they will implement their safety and evacuation plan and evacuate their buildings and get personnel accountability. At which time, we will activate our incident management team that, as you all know, we've been building over the past year and so I'm excited to see this really first drill thrown at them and they will respond to our incident command post over here in the police department and they will start figuring things out. And then which case they will be trying to coordinate with all the different facilities and make sure that they get accountability of all the employees, make sure everybody's safe and then start their, their planning process and identifying what needs to be done throughout the city as a result of that. We're also interfacing with the Los Angeles Air Force Base and the Air Force Base, the emergency manager there, Justin DiDolph, and I have coordinated, they're going to want response from the fire department and assuming that the fire department is not otherwise engaged in real world activities, they will dispatch some units over there to assist in, and the exercise that the Air Force Base is participating in as well. And with that, we will also be exercising our multi-agency coordination group, which is largely, a large amount of the department heads and, and the city manager. And then at a separate time, the policy group, which is all of you and the, and, and the multi-agency coordination group. And that's simply going to be, you'll get an alert via the Everbridge system and it'll tell you to call in onto a conference line and we'll just simply call in and basically take a roll call and say if this were real, we'd be discussing real, real world issues. So it should take very small amount of your time out of your way if you can, if you can make that call and if you don't get the call, then we know we have some work to do in that regard. So that is really our, the synopsis for the exercise, I'm really excited to see how it goes. It's largely been unannounced, so, and, and for good, good cause, we want to see more of the reality of how people will react. So I'm excited for the exercise and that's all I really have in regards to the presentation pending your questions.
That is great Randy, and I know through your emergency management plan, the strategic plan, that this is like an assessment of sorts for us, how do we respond to this? Will there be an unplanned one in the future as well or unannounced?
Yes, in the future I have several, one thing we want to do is build muscle memory. And so as we go through the, through continued training processes, because we don't have everybody quite trained, we have a good portion of them after a really strong training program here in the last six months. But once that's done, once this, you know, it's a crawl, walk, run. And so we're gonna get to that run and, and one day maybe we'll push the button and, and maybe me and a few other people will know about it and we'll see how we really respond to that. And it may be earthquake, it may be, the scenario doesn't matter, it's really our response mechanisms that matter in that muscle memory. And so I'll be excited for that and that is definitely on our radar screen. But nothing in the near future.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Randy? Alright, thank you very much, look forward to hearing about the results.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation from Barbara Voss, economic, I'm sorry, deputy city manager. I guess that's not official yet. Maybe tomorrow, depending on the consent agenda. For tonight, economic development manager regarding two website launches. Barbara?
Okay, is this long?
Yes.
Okay, good evening Mayor Boils, Mayor Pro Tem Persek and members of council. I've been working with EDAC on several different initiatives and one is the rebuild of the elsagundo-business.com website. About five years ago, actually when Mayor Boils was chair of EDAC, they launched a website, elsagundo-business.com, it had some really great content on the site. But as time progressed, the site was really designed for a desktop user because at that, at that time, the research showed that the primary person who would be looking to relocate their business or looking for property would be on a desktop. Obviously times have changed, we're now in a mobile environment and we needed a site that would be responsive to all different, a tablet, an iPhone. So that's what sparked this rebuild. And then as we were discussing amongst the committee in EDAC and working with Vision Internet, who helped to build the site, who built the site, we started to think about different things. What do people really ask for in economic development? What are they looking for? What's the question that I always get asked when I answer the phone? And how can we get that information on the website in addition to all the other great information that was already on there? So I just wanted to walk you through the homepage. This is our home collage or hero image. And as you can see, we have four different photographs here. We can also put some text over this if we wanted to call out something on the hero image. Each of these images can be easily changed. We're just trying to highlight some of the key aspects of the business community here in El Segundo. The top navigation, why El Segundo? So why would you choose El Segundo as a place to locate your business? The business community, one of the top questions, who's here? People ask, you know, who's in the aerospace and defense industry in El Segundo? Who's in bioscience in El Segundo? Are there other architects in El Segundo? What are the creative media companies that are in El Segundo? All of that information is housed now in this who's here section of our, of our website. And we've added some additional components. Aerospace Capital of the World shows all of our aerospace and defense companies. I'm gonna go back, I'm not gonna go through each one of these. So the next question I always get is real estate. What kind of properties available for lease, for sale? And how is that, or where is it located in the city? Sometimes people ask, I'm just interested in Smoky Hollow. What, what's in Smoky Hollow? Or I'm interested in a retail location downtown. So I, as we go down on the page, I'll show you how we categorize the different sections of the city. These four boxes, I can put anything I want in this. Right now we're calling out champions of business. All the link, URL links are changeable by the user through the CMS. So we have the four key categories here kind of called out. And then explore El Segundo. It's an interactive map, so all of El Segundo and then Smoky Hollow and you click into Smoky Hollow for more information. Downtown, click into downtown for more information. News center, what's, what's happening in the world of economic development, the world of business in El Segundo? You know Randy's Donuts moved to town, that's pretty exciting. Raytheon has a, four new STEM centers, one of Raytheon has four new STEM centers, one of which is at the, is at LA Air Force Base. Some community activism within the business community here in El Segundo. Obviously, Lakers, Jeanne Buss talks about getting the Champion of Business Award, which happened last month. And then, what people are saying, this is our testimonials. So, as part of the previous website, we had, and I could put, I think, 12 here, 12 testimonials total. I have four right now. We've found that business people want to hear from other business people about what it's like to operate a business here. They don't necessarily want to hear from city staff, even though that's hopefully helpful. But they want to hear from other business leaders, and kind of talk eye-to-eye on what it's like to do business here. So, just to give you some examples of the functionality within the site. As I mentioned, this is all clickable. So you click on that, "A Smart Business Move." And I can choose wherever I want it to lead, within the site. So this is the video that we showed at Champions of Business, with Mayor Boils as the narrator. We can play the video here, we can put any video we want there. A little bit more about why El Segundo is a smart business move. And you go back to home here anytime you want. And then, our satellite photo leads to, just an overview of the business community. So this section shows some of our notable companies. Again, these logos can be changed anytime. Just trying to highlight some of the companies that are more notable, that people may be interested in hearing about. And then again, these are called "Call to Action Buttons." So these are sort of the, what do you want to bring out of all the interior pages within your site to highlight and show people, or attract people to go and look further on that particular topic? So Jeanne Buss, Champion of Business. And then we have a whole Champion of Business page. All of our award, oh, there's Mayor Boils. And then our "Thank you to our sponsors," video content in here from all the different years that we've done it, photographs of the past award recipients, more information about the Champion of Business program. And then, Economic Development has its own, several pages actually. There's an overview of the Economic Development Advisory Council, what its role is in the city. And then we talk about all the members. So who's on EDAC is another common question. And what do they do? So each of these members, we'll just select our chair, has a bio, a little bit more information about. And this is when we won the Most Business Friendly City Award. That's Al, and Rod, and Steve. So each member of EDAC has some information about their career, and their role in the city. And then, I'll show you just quickly, the business community. Very common question, top 20 employers. These are all ordered by alphabet, so as to not disclose number of employees, or anything like that. But here's all of our top employers. So at a glance, someone can learn about who the key employers are in El Segundo. And then, another question we get a lot is Fortune 500 companies. Here they are, our Fortune 500 companies. And then you can go to the, ooh, I need my glasses. Okay, Business Directory. And here's every business according to our business license database. That is in El Segundo. I've taken out some of the home occupancy, and lessors of real estate, and things like that. But this is the core of all of the businesses that are here. And then, another thing that I like about this is that one of the objectives of the Economic Development Program is industry diversification, and looking at not being so dependent on a couple of large industry groups, but to try to bring other businesses into the community. So obviously, we have Aerospace Capital of the World. But you can go to the Business Directory, and select any category that you like. And I use the North American Industry Classification Codes, kind of in the, there's long, six, I think, six to eight-digit codes. First two numbers are kind of the bigger categories, and then I got a little bit, I tried to lump them into bigger categories, so we wouldn't have hundreds and hundreds of different industry classifications here. But Bioscience, for example, if you query on Bioscience, you get all the Bioscience companies that are in El Segundo, and so on, and so on. You can query on Airlines, something that is of interest, what airlines are here. Okay, and then, Real Estate. Really, the key about that is, and I have to give special thanks to Megan Covar Rubias, the Economic Development Intern, for gathering all of these available properties. Okay, let's ignore that. Yep, so here they all are. Some have photos, some don't. But, this is the majority of all the available properties. And then you could take it down a step further, and go, "Smoky Hollow Available Properties." And so there's only the properties that are available in, I don't know what this pop-up is, that are available in the Smoky Hollow area, so you can see there. And same for Downtown. And then, Business Advantages, we talk about our tax rates. We talk about expedited permitting that the Planning and Building Safety Department offers. We talk about world-class talent, that, you know, we have so many PhD-level, high-tech, well-trained employees here. And then, you know, demographic snapshot. So, and there's an E-Business Guide in here too. And then, of course, contact us, and schedule a tour, get more information, any other additional information you're looking for. Okay, so that is the Economic Development Site. And then, as part of our Hospitality and Tourism Initiative, we talked about our Start Here Campaign, and looking to attract anything from day trippers to international travelers, to in-state California travelers in El Segundo. So, this one has the brand colors of our Start Here Campaign. A little bit of El Segundo. This one has hotels, shops, restaurants, things to do. All geared towards someone who might be, you know, maybe working here, looking for a good restaurant, or coming in for the day, looking for something to do, or spending a few days here as they, you know, plan to travel to other points within Los Angeles County. Here's all the hotels, shopping, restaurants depicted on a map. You click on any of these, you get a little bit more information. And then, you know, the address of where they're located. Day Trips, again, all of this is editable by the user through the CMS. I can add five or six things. I could say, you know, the new stadium, that's just open, you know, when that opens, or the Olympic venues, I could put whatever I want in here, and then the distance from that to kind of show that we are accessible to anywhere in LA County. And then, these are, yeah, Calendar, what's going on in town, Instagram Feed, real-time Instagram, you know, whenever anyone posts, hashtag #visitelsegundo, that'll show up there. And then, any little call-out from the news, or recent stories, businesses opening, ribbon cuttings, anything else can be placed here. So, I think I will leave the interior pages for you to explore, unless there's anything in particular you want me to show you, and open for questions.
I just had a question about the calendaring. So, are, on the upcoming events, are you just putting city events? Or are you out, doing outreach to other community partners to submit theirs?
We're doing outreach to community partners primarily. City events would be only those events that we think, oh, if you're coming to travel, or if you're on vacation, I might want to take my, if I'm here on Halloween, I might want to take my kids to the Halloween frolic. But we're really geared toward thinking about who the end-user is, which would be that visitor coming in, trying to attract that visitor into town. And then we have our, you know, Old Town Music Call automobile, our main attractions, called out here. And each of them has, each of them has their own page. Worked with Phelps on search engine optimization. That's why you see things like, under Hotels, Hotels Near LAX, and All Hotels. Well, that's the same list of hotels. But they identified, through their research, that a lot of people search Hotel Near LAX, Hotel Near LAX. And if we have that page called out on our website, then we're much more likely to rank higher in the Google search results, if we have that specifically stated.
So if a community, a nonprofit wants to get their event put on here, is there a online presence where they can go and enter that? Or do they have to email you? What is the protocol?
They would do the contact and email me. Yeah, me and Megan, right now. And then we'd simply enter it in, and link to whatever link.
And then, as far as the open real estate, are you linking to any type of real estate site that you, that information's automatically updated? Or is someone going to have to manually do that?
So we link out every single listing, it's just minimal, address, you know, a little description about it. You want me to show? Oh, sure, I'll show you. Yes, so, we definitely don't want to be monitoring every broker's website. Like, for Pacific Corporate Towers, for example, we have that listed as Pacific Corporate Towers. There's all sorts of suites, and buildings, and levels, and sizes available, but we're not going to try to manage all of that.
Right.
We're just going to go, Pacific Corporate Towers, here's what it is, and here's the link to their site. And then here, out to their site. This one happens to be LoopNet. Continental Park, going to, you know, Continental Development Site.
So, just off, just out of, you know, estimation, how many hours a week do you think it will take to update this, these websites to the level that we want to keep them? Like, what is the man-hours going to take to do this, to manage these?
We're still determining that. Right now, we're trying to still fine-tune it, and make sure that everything is exactly how we want it to be. But I would say, you know, with the both websites, calendars, current events, available properties, keeping the business, because the Business Directory is also a fluid thing. I mean, businesses leave, and they come in, and, you know, people are going to find things in there that, you know, are closed, and we'll try to stay on top of that. Probably five to 10 hours a week.
That's very good, thank you.
Someone wants their property added. Who do they reach out to? I saw you listed, and Greg, in terms of outreach on the other site. But for this site, they wanted their property listed?
Yeah, so they can contact, same thing, it's a contact, a simple email contact. Yeah, Contact Us, List Your Property, I think there's a link here.
So the property listings that are there?
Yeah.
Are we paying for like an IDX feed through, like, LoopNet or something?
Nope.
So where are we pulling the data? Are you manually entering and?
We're manually entering.
That's exciting.
We're accepting volunteers. No, it's, yeah, it's a lot. It's something that has to be maintained, and it has to be tracked. But what we're entering is somewhat limited, you know, address, and a little description, and then a link. Sometimes a photograph.
You should ask Bob Healy to put you on like an auto-email for new listings that come up. Because he can probably do that through one of his systems, and then you'll just get an automated email from him, and have it fed to you, rather than you go out and look for it.
So we've spoken with, because you know, we have so many real estate firms here in town. We've spoken with CBRE, Jones Lang LaSalle, Newmark Knight Frank, Cushman Wakefield, kind of the bigger ones, of course, PCT, Continental Development, about how to keep this updated, and what best practices are to kind of get us that information. And we're still working on that, but I think it should be probably, you know, a monthly, for the available properties, a monthly scan-through, see if we can find anything new. All right, anything else?
Good work. I know EDAC was actively involved in this for a long time, right? They got 16, 17 volunteers in that committee. Where were they tonight, Al? Too many things going on, or what? Anyway, thank you. Thank you for all your efforts, city staff and volunteers.
This is a lot of work, and congratulations to you and Megan, and Al, for doing this, and moving this forward. And it was a huge undertaking, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next presentation, is Bartel &amp; Associates regarding the city's unfunded pension liabilities. Dr. Brand and I, while Mary Beth is coming up, we're discussing this for two hours today with pretty much every department head and every union group represented in a room today. And some pretty sobering information, so thank you for being here this evening. Greg, you want to give us some context?
Sure, sure, while we're loading the presentation, one of our major challenges, and really, I think a major challenge for every public agency in the state of California that contracts with CalPERS for their pension system, is the increasing costs. CalPERS, as you'll see in a moment, made some very bold assumptions back in 2001 about where its future was going, with respect to its financial situation. And cities in turn, including this one, made decisions about what to do with their pension plans based on those assumptions. And guess what? The assumptions turned out to be very temporary in their accuracy. And cities, CalPERS has found itself in a situation where it now needs to go to its members, including us, and ask for us to make up the difference in what the financial returns didn't eventually deliver. We in turn, work with our labor groups, and I think it was Dr. Brand's idea to involve Subcommittee of Counsel and all the labor groups, in understanding the severity of this issue, their role, and the city's role in figuring out this issue. And to get everyone informed, and educated, and to keep the conversation going about where we are with respect to our pension situation, and options, and alternatives for how we can solve for that. So Bartel &amp; Associates really is one of the premier actuary firms that this city and a number of cities use to track the city's position, and then predict the future for where our pension obligation is going. And we had a two-hour session today with Mary Beth and the council Subcommittee and staff, getting into the very detailed situation with where we currently stand, and what our future is. We're having technical difficulties. Do you want to do the consent calendar? Or Public Communications? Maybe we do Public Communications first?
Let's do Public Communications. Yeah, please. All right, now's the time and place for Public Communications. Oh, sorry, yeah, roll call, thanks.
Sorry.
Thanks, Greg. No, just kidding. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nichol.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember Bren.
Present.
Mayor Protam Persek.
Here.
And Mayor Boils.
Here. Okay, thank you, Tracy. All right, Public Communications, now's the time and place. Five-minute limit per person, 30-minute limit total.
Members of City Council, you all know me, Mike Robbins. Used to be on the City Council here a while back. Also, a 35-year El Segundo resident, and a 30-year homeowner. I hate to say it, but regarding the city employee pensions, I told you so. I've been saying this for years and years, even back to when I was on City Council a long time ago. And every time the city gives a pay raise, the city employees are already extraordinarily highly compensated, especially in the, those in the police and fire unions, and their managers. That increases the amount of money we have to pay, we taxpayers have to pay into their pensions, which end up being multimillion-dollar pensions when they retire, at full retirement. And every pay raise is increasing not only the current cost, but this long-term liability, which is just huge. So a while back, I determined from public records requests, that in the city of El Segundo, we had police and firefighters making about $150,000 a year total compensation when they start out. So their regular pay... when they start out. So their regular pay over time, and also their so-called special compensation add-ons, like where firefighters would get extra, an extra pay raise to have the driver's license they need to drive the fire engine that they're already getting paid a pay raise to become a fire engineer, a promotion from a firefighter. So they're getting, they're getting multiple redundant raises, multiple redundant compensation. Firefighters, and again, I, I love and respect the firefighters and the police and the job they do when they do it competently, and they usually do. And I understand the difficulties they have in their job, especially politically, if God forbid, a police officer ever has to properly shoot someone, especially of a different race or something. They may have hell to pay for them, lose their career. In some cities, at least, hopefully not here. So understand, you know, there are problems with the job. There's lots of other jobs that are even more dangerous than police and firefighters, commercial fishermen, logging industry, there are other jobs that pay a lot less money that are even more dangerous. So now, having that be said, we're paying a lot of extra money for the police and firefighter salaries and benefits and pensions ranging from 150, well, it used to be, it's higher now, 150,000, even $375,000 a year or more total compensation. A former police chief, when he had retired, he cashed out his accrued vacation and sick leave pay for $199,000. He cashed it out. And he got 23% pay raise earlier that year, that also pumped up that cash out. This problem really has to be addressed. We have a inherent unavoidable conflict of interest when the police and firefighter unions endorse candidates for city council as they regularly do, because they're in effect trying to hire their own bosses, the people that will give them the biggest pay raises and pension increases, no matter how unaffordable and unsustainable, and then try to raise taxes and fees on businesses and residents. That's, in my opinion, and I believe I'm totally correct, is why the city, some of the council members up there in the dais have started action to try to charge a brand-new redundant trash collection fee on homeowners in California, actually for, there'll be one to four units of residential property. So at this point in time, people have already, property owners, not tenants, not the occupants, only property owners this time, unlike for the water rate increases. It's very unfair not letting the tenants, the renters who'll have to pay the trash fees, vote a protest ballot against it. But anyway, so property owners for El Segundo Properties Westus Polv, they should have already received their protest ballot. They need to get them in. The problem is if they lost it, the phone number they need to call to get the replacement for that ballot is on the ballot itself, or actually on the letter that came with it, but it's not on the city website as far as I can tell. And they need to call that number if they lost or did not receive their protest ballot. They need to call either the city clerk's office, well, I suggest calling city clerk's office, or call, I'm Jasmine Allen at Public Works, at 524-2365. And I already talked to the city's consultant that's handling these ballots, processing them, sending them out, et cetera. And they said it'll take them 10 working days to get your replacement ballot, up to 10 working days. So property owners need to get on that right away if they wanna protest this new tax fee increase. And we already paid for that on our property taxes. So many different things we paid for through our property taxes are so sky-high. We have cities now charging the citizens and taxpayers extra money, extra new taxes for things that we already paid for in our property taxes. So I believe the trash collection fee is redundant, an unfair tax.
Time is up.
And people need to protest it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Any other public communications?
Good evening. I'm Melissa McCallum with the El Segundo Public Library, and I'd like to invite the city council and the community to two upcoming events. Our annual Author Fair will be this Saturday, October 20th, from 10 to 5. We'll have author panels and signings, a cooking demonstration, vintage book covers from the International Printing Museum, poetry and music, and also special events for kids, including story times and crafts, a comic book class, character meet and greets, and costume making. So all are welcome for this free event, which is sponsored by our friends at El Segundo Public Library. You're also invited to be a part of our First Living Library in partnership with Esmoa. Participants will have the opportunity to check out people instead of books for one-on-one 20-minute conversations. Examples of the living books available for checkout include A Young Widow, A Japanese American Incarcerated During World War II, A Drag Queen, A Refugee, and A Police Officer. We hope that the, the conversations will foster empathy, break down stereotypes, and inspire curiosity. Conversations will take place at Esmoa on Thursday, October 25th, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., and at the El Segundo Public Library on Saturday, October 27th, from 1:00 to 4:00. You can sign up online or just call the library or the museum to reserve your living book. And I did, I just wanna say a special thank you to Julie Todd, who's the library lead for both events. Thanks.
Sorry, Melissa, would you mind repeating the dates and the time again, please?
So Author Fair is Saturday, October 20th, from 10 to 5. And then the Living Library, the one at Esmoa, is, is October 25th, from 5:00 to 7:30. And then the one at the library is October 27th, from 1:00 to 4:00.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Love it. All right, that concludes public communications. City Council comments? Seeing none, we'll move along. All right, item A, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Oh, I'm so sorry. You, you're ready now. Okay, we're just gonna plow through. We didn't...
We'll finish that.
We were, we're focused. It's already eight. No, I'm just kidding. All right.
Okay, my apologies, but we've got our, our high-tech presentation up and working now, I hope. Thank you all for having me here to talk today. I'm, first of all, for, for people who don't know me, we did the introduction like 10 minutes ago. I work for a company called Bartel Associates. We are actuaries. We spend, a lot of our business is explaining CalPERS to cities, but we do not work for CalPERS ourselves, so you can't throw anything at me. Okay. What I'm gonna do as quickly as possible is go through how the city's pension plans got in the state they are, what we project for the near-term future in terms of contribution rates, and a little bit of, of options the city's already implemented to help mitigate that. So there's four basic reasons we see why the city's funded status of the pension plans is in the position it's in, which is not ideal, and we'll go through them first. The biggest of these all is investment losses. This chart is a little different than most you see about investment return. There's a solid blue line down the middle. That's the rate of return CalPERS needs to make. It's what they've built into all of their, their calculations, and it's roughly seven and a half percent. It varies a little year to year. Any returns above that are good, below seven and a half are not good and lead to losses. So for example, in 2016, 15, they earned about a little over zero percent. That was not okay. That was really bad because it was seven percent below the assumed rate. Similarly, two years ago, they earned 11%. That's like an okay return. It's about four percent above seven, but it's not a fantastic return. So you're looking at everything relative to seven and a half percent. The biggest issues are coming in 2008 and '09, when they lost 24% of the, of their money in 2009, which is like 30% less than assumed. And that's something the funds have just not recovered from. CalPERS's old policy back in those days was to try to keep rates very, very smooth so that they could be managed by cities and budgeted. That did great at keeping rates smooth, but that did really badly at getting enough money back into the funds to help make up for the 2008, '09 losses. The other big contributing factor is this thing called enhanced benefits that you probably read about a lot in the paper. In the early 2000s, the plans were very well-funded, and what happened at that point was there was a feeling that they were so well-funded, we weren't gonna need that money. And benefits were enhanced, larger pensions were granted to people. In the city of El Segundo, it only went to fire and police, and the city did not enhance benefits for its miscellaneous-class employees, which is actually fairly unusual and probably a little bit farsighted. The city since then has put in a tier two, which is a lower benefit formula for people who joined later. And then the Pepper people, those hired since 2013, fall under the new state law that requires lower benefit formulas for newly hired governmental employees. The last thing that's driving costs around the state is that we have a lot more retirees and actives by liability that causes a lot more increases, volatility in your pension rates. When things are going badly, they increase rates more and more. The city of El Segundo, mainly because your plan is older, has a lot more liability belonging to retirees than other comparable cities, and that helps drive your rates up. It's a good thing to have a lot of retirees. It's a good thing that they have a lot of assets. This is just sort of a byproduct of the age of the city's plan. So CalPERS has been taking action to try to improve the, the funded status of the plans. They have changed their contribution policy to make it not so smooth, to try and get more money into the plans. They've done a better job with setting their actuarial assumptions, particularly that people are gonna live longer and continue to live longer. So they have predictions for how long I'm gonna live, but they would predict that my children will live longer than I will, and their children will live longer than they do. And we're not talking about tons, you know, we're not talking about living to 150. We're talking about living one or two years longer, which still is a very large impact on pension costs. The last thing that happened is they listened to their investment advisors and have lowered the assumed rate of return. They think that the current assets they have will only earn seven percent, not seven and a half percent, so they have dropped their predictions in accordance with that. At the same time, they have a couple new policies that should also help fund the plans better. They have something called risk mitigation strategy, which says that as we have more and more assets and liabilities belonging to retirees, we can't afford the volatility in rate of return. We can't afford to have really good years and really bad years. We'd like to keep everything a little more smooth. That will help cities be able to budget and plan. But we can't make that change in our investments all at once. It will drive costs up, so they've got a plan to do this very, very slowly, over about the next 20 years. And we think at the end of that time that they will be assuming investments earn about six percent. So much less return, but much more stable. The last thing they did was this February, they adopted a new amortization policy, so when they have gains and losses, they'll be funding them a lot more quickly. That will help the city spend less money on interest to pay these off, so it's a good thing, but it does drive up the near-term costs a lot more steeply. We'll look a little bit at the city's plans themselves. This is some demographic information about the city's miscellaneous groups. So miscellaneous is everybody who's not police and fire. And we have some head counts of the active employees that stayed very stable over the past 20 years or so. You've got in 2017, 168 active employees. By comparison, if you look in the bottom box, we have 141 transferred people. These are people working for other cities now. This El Segundo still owes them a piece of their pension. 152 separated people, not working at all under CalPERS. The city owes them a piece of pension. And 343 retirees. So way very much more retirees than active employees. And that is a serious driver of the increase in pension rates. The city has about half as many, the ratio of actives to retirees is about half, and when you look around the whole CalPERS system, it's 1.3. This is part of the reason the city's rates are so high that you're funding a lot of retirees. This picture shows sort of graphically that relationship over time since 1997. The red bars are the number of active employees. They're kind of steady, dropped off a little bit over the past 10 years or so, while the number of retirees continues to grow. This trend will continue. The retiree population is not yet mature. It's gonna grow and grow and grow, and we don't expect the city employees to grow. Talk a little bit about what happened to the city's unfunded liabilities from last year to this year. And I'll say, first of all, that this year, when I talk about this year and now in the CalPERS world, now is June 30th, 2017. Takes CalPERS a little over a year to do all their work and issue the reports. So the one that was just published recently was June 30th, 17. So that's the newest information we have. The city's unfunded liability for miscellaneous was 32 and a half million last year, and it's slightly less than that this year in 2017. The two big things that happened between the years was, I don't, I had the pointer. I lost it. There was an asset gain of 2.8 million dollars, meaning the assets, June 30th of 17, that year they earned 11%. So they earned close to $3 million more than expected, but at the same time, CalPERS was in the process of lowering its discount rate, and that increased liabilities 2.1 million dollars more than expected. So it was almost a wash. Next year, we know a little bit about 2018. The asset return was much lower. There'll be only a very small little gain, but the liability change will be twice as big for changing the discount rate. So we think that next year, we expect the unfunded liabilities to grow. This is a picture of the funded status of the CalPERS pension plan for miscellaneous employees back to 1996. A funded ratio of 100% means that the assets exactly equal the liabilities of the plan. In 1996, it was just a little over 100% funded. If you remember the 1990s, investment turns were, investment returns were great, and everyone could make a lot of money on invested assets. CalPERS did too. The plans were pushing 140% around 2,000. At that point, the contributions were reduced. We had the dot-com bubble in 2002 and '03 that reduced the assets, so the plan became less funded. Started to recover. 2008, '09 hit with massive asset losses. And the funded status of the plan has not recovered since then. It's running about 70% funded. Yes? Stay closer. Okay, I'm sorry. That's better. I can hear it now. Sorry. Okay. This picture shows the city's contribution rates from 1999 through now, and the light green line that you can just sort of barely see, it's a little bit light, represents the cost of benefits that are earned every year by employees. And what I want you to see in that line is it's very stable. The benefits employees have been earning every year have been costing about the same amount of money, year in and year out, about eight percent of their pay. The dark green boxes, this is the city's total required contribution from CalPERS. In the years when the plans were overfunded, so 2000, 2001, 2003, there was no required contribution at all. And then when the city started having asset, the CalPERS assets started having asset losses, the city's total contribution increased sharply, and particularly since 2008, '09, '10, just dramatically, it keeps increasing, increasing, increasing. So what this is telling us is that the high contribution rates we see now are driven mainly by the asset losses. It's not the cost of benefits that people are earning. That's been very stable. It's been the asset losses funding the plan and trying to make up for that. We have an analysis of why the contribution rates changed from year to year. So the rate is what you, the city is billed by CalPERS. For the current fiscal year, they're billing 23.2% of payroll, which means the city will pay a dollar of payroll to miscellaneous employee and send 23 cents to CalPERS. That rate for next year is gonna be 26%, 27%. Why did it change? I put in the box a couple of the key factors. One is that payroll did not go up as much as CalPERS expects. They expect about a 3% increase overall. It went down, did not go up as much, which means that when you take the dollars that CalPERS is billing and divide them by a smaller payroll, the rate actually goes up. The dollars are the same, but as a percent of pay, it's higher. There's also two, a reduction because the city made extra payments in last year, so that brought the rate down. They fresh-started, which is sort of like refinancing your mortgage. It increased the payments in the short term, but will save a lot of money in the long run. And so those things also had a very big impact on the rate.
And that, that fresh start was an election that we made, right?
Yes.
Yes, we didn't have to take that option, but we chose to knowing that it would save us. What was the number on the saved interest over time by that ballpark?
It was about a little over $2 million.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah. You're paying, the city decided to pay more upfront and less out later, so there's a lot less interest charge on it. Okay. The next thing I'm gonna show you are some projections of where the costs are going, and those are taking into account everything we know that's happening in CalPERS, including a lot of sensitivity of what could happen if investment returns are different than expected. This is a projection of the costs for 30 years. I'm gonna take a couple minutes and explain this chart. The solid line down the middle is where the most likely rate for the city's contributions to be. So it starts, it doesn't wanna stay on. I'm sorry. I can see the pointer for a minute, and then it goes away. Okay, so on the left is 2018, '19. The contribution rate in that year is about 23% of pay. The contribution rate in that year is about 23% of pay. Next year is 26% of pay. It levels out, and it goes up and up and up. And you end up a little over 10 years out with the most likely contribution rate being 34% of pay. We do a lot of modeling about what the asset returns could be, and this is sort of the 50th percentile. So the most likely place the contribution rate will be. It will not follow that line directly. It'll go up and down and all around, but most likely it'll be on that rate, on that line. After about 20 years, the rate drops off very steeply. That's when the fresh start payment is done. After that, the rate most likely levels out at about 9% of pay after time. That is sort of a different world. The unfunded's been paid off. All of the classic employees are gone. The employees left working for the city are PEPRA employees who have lower benefits and are paying more of the costs themselves. And CalPERS has totally shifted their investments to less risky investments. Probably earning less, but having less chance of gains and losses. So that's a great place to be, but it takes a really long time to get there. 22 years, that's a very long time. The little numbers up on top and the little numbers down below, the solid green line, represent 25th and 75th percentiles. So if the asset returns are not exactly as expected, you'll get contributions higher or lower than you expect. 50% of the time, the contribution will be somewhere between those upper numbers and the lower numbers. Again, most likely right around the green line in the middle. But there is a 25% chance it could be above the top numbers and a 25% chance it'll be below the bottom numbers. So there is a lot of potential variability and some potential for very large contribution rates. So if we look a little more closely, just at the next 10 years, this is the same graph. For the first 10 years, it stretched out, so it doesn't look as steeply increasing, but it is the same numbers. We turned them into dollars. The green numbers are the 50th percentile, so most likely place for the rates to be. The contribution in dollars for this fiscal year, 18, '19, is $3.2 million. And $3.6 million next year. After 10 years, in the fiscal year 29, '30, it'll be close to $6 million a year. So that, and that's the expected contribution rate. The red line in the middle represents the amount the city is being billed on the unfunded liability. So that's all related to past costs. There is very, very little the city can do to influence that. It's not related at all to the number of current employees you have. And that's predicted to increase from a little over $2 million in the current year to $4.1 million going forward. That's where most of the increase is coming from. The bottom line is the cost of benefits people earn every year. That will go up a little bit with their payroll, but it's certainly nothing near paying off the unfunded cost. Okay, we're going to switch over and talk about the safety plans. Safety plans are more expensive for a lot of reasons. The benefits formulas are better. The safety, fire, and police have enhanced formulas. It's also really important to keep in mind that they do not have social security. So this is their only retirement, okay? There's not a social security backup base on top of the city's pension for fire and police. They have a better formula. They retire earlier, so you have less time to save up money for them. And they live as long as everybody else in retirement, so they get a lot more benefits over their lifetime. This number of active employees in fire and safety was dropped quite a bit in the sort of 2010 and later period, and there are now just under 100 active employees in fire and police. By contrast, we have 225 current retirees. So there's even a bigger ratio of retirees to actives than we saw in miscellaneous, and that is really a huge driver of the costs, just that there's that many retirees. They have a lot of assets, and they don't have any payroll. With the same picture we did for miscellaneous, you can see the number of retirees just rising, rising, rising. And the number of active employees has actually dropped quite significantly and is very small compared to the number of retirees. And we would expect, again, that this would continue to grow. If you look at the funded status of the plan, again, the funded ratio is kind of similar between the two years. The real difference here is that because there's so much retiree liability, you can see in 2017, the assets of this plan are $166 million. The liability are $270. But the assets of the plan are even less than just the amount we owe for the retirees. The retiree liability is $190 million, and the assets don't cover that because there are so many retirees compared to actives. We look at the funded ratio over time, very similar to miscellaneous, up and down. You can see the huge hit that happens in 2009. The same picture of contribution rates over time. The bright green is the amount of benefits that people are earning every year. It's really, really stable. It's at about 17, 18%. Up a little bit in the past year, but not much. It's, that in and of itself is manageable. The total contribution is being driven by the asset losses and needing to make up for those, and that's what's driving the city's contribution up so high. When we look at a comparison of the contribution rate from year to year. So again, this is the amount CalPERS is billing divided by payroll. Remembering, we have a lot of retirees out there who are adding costs. They don't have payroll, so that helps make the rate go up. The rate for the current fiscal year, 18, '19, is 62.5% of pay. And for 19, '20, it's 72% of pay. 72% of pay means a dollar of payroll, 72 cents to CalPERS. The two biggest things changing the contribution rate were payroll being less than expected, less than the 3% increase CalPERS predicts. That means they're billing you the same dollars. It's divided by a smaller payroll, so the rate goes up. The rate went up 3.5% of pay because payroll was down. And then the city's prepayment of money to CalPERS did reduce the rate a little bit. All the rest of the changes listed are scheduled changes happening because of CalPERS changes in the past that are being phased in over time. We have the same projections we saw for miscellaneous. They really work the same. The green line is the 50th percentile, the most expected rate. I'm only going to show you the 20-year one. And then we have the 25th and, the 75th and 25th percentile. The difference here is the rates are really big. So right now, you're paying 62% of pay. Next year, 71% of pay. The most likely place for the rates to be in 10 years is 99.5% of pay. So just about for every dollar in payroll for police and fire, you'll owe a dollar to CalPERS. 25% chance that number will be over 125%. Remember, just, okay, it's a lot. It's a lot, okay. Here's the 30-year projection. And the good news is that it does come down eventually, okay? So we're paying off the unfunded liability.
Good news is some of us will still be on council by year. 20, 40, 41, Scott?
If we had done, if we had done this talk five years ago, I wouldn't have shown you those rates coming down. They would have just stayed up. So coming down eventually is actually a really good thing. It means CalPERS has changed things, and they're working on getting, you know, setting the contribution policy up so these actually do get paid off. That is a big change, and it's an improvement. But it takes, again, a really long time before the rates drop. It takes a really long time until the early 2040s where the rates even come back down to where they are now. Eventually, out in the late 2040s, the rates are down at a much more manageable 18% of pay. That's the cost of benefits that people are earning. Our world is, again, all PEPRA people. The classic people have retired. CalPERS's investments are more stable and things are good. But it took a long time and a lot of money to get there. Show you the breakdown again. The dollar amount going from $9.2 million in the current fiscal year to $18.2 million 10 years out. It's the most likely place for the safety contributions. And again, being driven, the vast majority of that is coming from payments on the unfunded liability. So on liabilities already earned in the past for current employees and retirees relating mainly to asset losses from 2009. We have the two groups together. The purple is the miscellaneous total dollars. The greenish is safety. The city's total projected contributions are about $12.5 million for the current fiscal year, going to $24 million 10 years out in 29, '30. So it's about a $12 million per year increase by 10 years out. Summary of the total liabilities, the unfunded liabilities for the two plans together right now is $136 million. So the way to think about that is if you could pay off $136 million, the unfunded liability would be gone. You would still need to pay the cost of benefits that are accruing every year, okay? So you're not, you're not done if you had 136. It just gets you caught up to date. Okay, so what can you do about this? There are things that help. They all involve having money because the, what we owe to CalPERS is a present value. It's money owed now for time in the future, and you're essentially being charged 7% interest on that. So you can, one thing you can do is send extra money to CalPERS. We think that's probably the place with the best long-term investment return. The city has been sending extra payments into CalPERS. They've used both of the two options available. But what happens is when you send the money and now you're paying off, it's sort of like paying off your mortgage early. You save the interest payments. And for what the city did in 2018 and '19, so the way to read this chart is miscellaneous got $578,000 in advance that wasn't required. For paying that, they save, you saved $800,000 of interest. So you saved more in interest than the amount that went to CalPERS, okay? The same thing on the safety side. They got, CalPERS was given 1.3 million extra, and it saved $1.8 million in interest. The city's planning to give extra money again to CalPERS this year, and we expect a lot of interest savings from that. So then the other, the other idea people have is to set up a supplemental trust. That's a trust the city has set up with PARs. You get to invest that money however you've chosen. You've chosen a sort of moderate, very moderate balanced portfolio. That money is set aside. It can only be used to pay CalPERS or to reimburse yourself for money that went to CalPERS. But you have a lot of control over when, what you do with that money. And the plan right now is to use it to mitigate future contribution rates. And what I mean by that is it's, the money is intended to move into the trust to sit there, to grow with interest. And then at the point where the contribution rates get the highest, use that to pay some of the contribution rates. So this is just a picture of the amount of money we expect to go in over the next few years totaling about $4.5 million. Again, there will be a big interest savings by paying the money sooner. And this is what the intention is to do with it. I think, it doesn't show that well. You can see the green line, which is the same one we saw before for miscellaneous, of the contribution rate going up and then dropping. And what'll happen is we'll save up money in the trust, and instead of paying the full peak of the mountain, the highest rates, we'll be able to pay a lower amount, which is that orange line. So it will lower the city's rates when they're the highest and help make it much easier to budget for that. So that's, the city's really planning to do the two things that are available, both prepaying money to CalPERS and then setting up your own trust. It's a lot more flexible to let the money be applied when it's most needed. That is the, that's the end of my presentation. No, it's not. I'm sorry, I was asked to talk about healthcare. That's the end of the CalPERS part. I should stop and say, are there questions on that?
Just because it's come up before, I can't remember if it was this council or last council. I don't know if it was me or Don, probably me. But just question of if we were to buy out our CalPERS total obligation, what would it cost the city?
So if you want to leave CalPERS or stop having your employees earn benefits under CalPERS, that counts as leaving. CalPERS is very, very conservative in what they charge you. They want to charge you enough money that there is no chance they're ever going to need more from you. And they give you a very short time period to pay that, like 30 days. You can't pay it over time, and it's roughly $400 to $500 million.
Like $422 if I remember correctly.
$422 to $499.
Oh, there's a Ranger.
Yes, they give, they give an example.
Cautiously optimistic.
Yeah, so instead of, instead of the, let's go back. Instead of the $136 million you owe while the plan's ongoing, you would owe somewhere between $422 and $500 million if you wanted to get out of CalPERS.
Thank you. The other thing I'd like to highlight, I mean, you work with many different cities and governmental agencies. So I just want to give accolades to Joe and his group for everything that we've done because I know that we are more aggressive and creative than other governmental agencies in terms of getting a handle on this and addressing it. And I also want to point out that this is the first council that I'm aware of. The first two, last two years are the first time this city's ever done anything like we've done, which is set aside money towards pension obligations, specifically negative amortization line items, pension trust fund to get out of this thing. So I think Don and I and all of us heard the voters loud and clear when we campaigned, Carol as well, that they're very concerned about this topic and that we need to do something differently. So while some might say, "I told you so in the past," we are doing something about it now. And it is a very real concern. I just wanted to compliment you and your group for everything you've done to get a handle on this. Were there any questions before she can, because we went into even more depth earlier today. Were there any questions, Don, or anything you wanted to point out for the benefit of the council?
Well, Joe, I had asked you a couple times in the past to prepare a list of the things we've done humoratively to address this and not kick the can down the road anymore. And I believe you did that. Could you reissue that as a reminder to us? As we're starting to add up and put a dent in this. There's much, much more to do, of course, as we just heard. But this council, like the mayor just said, has taken action on this and wants to leave a different kind of a legacy to the future than the one that was left to us. I'd just like to get that back.
Absolutely, I can do a brief presentation maybe at the next council meeting. On this slide here, just want to point out on the prepayments that we've made between fiscal year 17, '18 and in the 18, '19 budget. Just in interest payments alone is $3.6 million. Plus the refresh is, was about $2.1 million. So, you know, well over $5.5 million that we've saved so far just in the two years alone that we've been proactive on this.
Okay, I have just a couple slides on the city's OPEB benefits. OPEB is other post-employee, other post-employment benefits, or we kind of think of it as retiree healthcare benefits. The city does pay the healthcare of employees who retire from the city. There is a cap that's about $1,200 per month per retiree. That may seem like a lot, but actually compared to the, you know, premiums are very, very expensive for people getting healthcare. The city has started pre-funding the obligation for this through a trust that's sponsored by CalPERS. Again, very much out ahead of other cities in doing this. So where we are at 2017, we've got 245 active employees covered by this program, meaning they could be eligible upon retirement, and 340 retirees actually collecting benefits. The actuarial liabilities for the plan, so this is a present value of what's owed. The total present value is about $62 million. There's $20 million set aside, so an unfunded liability of $40 million. It's about 1/3 funded. And this is a picture over time. So the city started funding between 2008 and 2010. So 1/3 funded may not sound particularly good compared to where the pension plans are at 70%. But this has been in the space of, you know, well under 10 years. So it's quite an improvement in the funded status. And I think if you talk to people around the state, they would, particularly around the country, they're very surprised that anybody is funding. I think California is a leader in that, and we do have, you know, cities that are pre-funding and pre-funding very aggressively and showing results.
What's, I know there are guidelines for CalPERS in terms of targets they'd like governmental agencies to be at, funding targets. Is there one for OPEB?
I think that the OPEB plans tend to aim a little bit lower than 100%, probably closer to 80% or 75% just because the benefits are a lot less certain. You know, a lot of things can happen. We're promising to pay healthcare premiums. They could suddenly start going down. They could suddenly start going down. It's very, it's a much less fixed promise than for pensions.
And do we have a sense of how we're doing, because we haven't talked about this item as much, how we're doing relative to either surrounding cities or some other benchmark in terms of funding progress?
So I went to a conference, it was back in May, a finance conference. I believe the presenter there said about fifty percent of cities statewide, just in California, are twenty-five percent funded or less. So we're definitely above that average.
I think our data was even not quite that good. We had about our median plan, actually, our median plan's about twenty-five percent funded, but our average of my clients is about seventeen percent funded. Okay? And those are people who've had their Bartel actuaries telling them for ten years they ought to be funding. So you're definitely ahead of the game here. This is last slide, projection of the city's contribution going forward. This is contribution to the trust, and sometimes you pay the benefits directly, but sort of net contribution is about four-and-a-half million dollars, going up very slowly over time, in line with payroll because that's how it was designed, running about seventeen percent of pay. This is a much more manageable obligation for the city. You can fund what you want to fund. You're doing a great job funding what you should fund, but it's not like you have an entity like CalPERS saying you must fund this much money. So the city has a little more control over the timing and the amount of payments than it does for pensions. So I think this is much more manageable. It doesn't have the huge projected increases that we see on the pension side. Okay? And that, I don't know if I can go back. That was the last slide.
That's seventeen percent. I mean, for the other, for CalPERS, you went out, but it won't change much over the past ten years, probably.
This, this one will run at about seventeen percent, I think, until, we've got about twenty more years left, so in the early 2040s, it drops to about six percent of pay.
And that's the same for safety and miscellaneous one?
Yeah, they're, they both have the same benefits, so we fund them together.
So with safety, we could be at one hundred and sixteen percent of payroll roughly by 2039?
Between the two, yes.
That was great. Do we have questions? No? Do we need a break after that? No, we'll go, I think we'll press on. Thank you very much.
I did have one question. So, you know, we have been trying to put some money aside and pay down some of that negative amortization loans, but, or debt. What is, is there a sweet spot where we should be, should we be actually putting more into that? Like what is?
So the, I have to say that I can't give you investment advice. I'm not an investment person, and nothing is guaranteed with investments. Okay? So we're talking about investing money. There's always a risk. But if you just sort of generally thinking about it, CalPERS is expecting to earn seven percent on the money. The city can't invest in the kind of things that pay seven percent. You're restricted in how you can invest the money. So if you have money that you're not doing anything else with, and you give it to CalPERS, that's, will earn more and it will save you money. But the hard decision is how much money do we have that we're not doing anything else with?
Right. And we should really maybe think about our, our reserve.
Yeah, I know we made some hard decisions just finalizing this last budget. We deferred on a lot of capital improvement projects. We set aside some money, if I remember, is three million roughly for capital improvement projects. But we are, and I should say, we also set aside a lot of money for this. What were the numbers we set aside in this last budget for the-
Million?
Prepay and the pension trust fund? A million and a half?
Million and a half for the prepay to CalPERS and one million for the pension trust.
Great, thank you.
But we should really take a little hard look at that reserve number and maybe if we put it into the, shift it over into the, the trust.
I think we decided we would do, we'd look at that once we got the latest, most recent CalPERS report back, right? Didn't we talk about that?
Right, and we typically revisit that during every budget process and also during mid-year as far as the policy on what reserve level is appropriate.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
It's been a long day. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now going on to a consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five-oh. Consent agenda. Do we have any polls?
I'd like to poll number thirteen and discuss that individually.
Mayor, I, City Attorney's Office would like to poll item eleven for a brief discussion and possible change in action.
Okay, noted, both of those, eleven and, you said thirteen, Don?
Correct.
Okay. Any others? Okay, do I have a motion to approve items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and twelve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five-oh. All right, item eleven, that's you, Mark.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a joint powers authority that's being proposed to be set up for the fire departments in the region for purposes of providing training for the personnel and whatnot. And the issue that I spoke to the chief about was that it calls for the members to be individually liable, if you will, and for to defend and indemnify one another against their potential bad acts, if you will, negligence, normal twerk type things. And what I suggested was that rather than approach it from this perspective, was try to get insurance for the authority because in the long run, it's been my experience that it's more efficient to insure it directly rather than having the members who have their, each, some of the members are in the same insurance pool, but they're in different insurance pools, and you end up with finger pointing and energy being used on trying to figure out who's responsible for some liability when you have so many member agencies as opposed to just buying insurance for the entity itself. The joint powers authority will be a separate legal entity, and so my recommendation is that we, that you allow staff to try to get the other cities to do the same, to buy into that concept. And if they do, great. If they don't, then we proceed the way it is, but at least like that authority to try to get insurance for the JPA independent so that it can just cover its own losses.
And if the other cities don't agree?
Then we proceed.
So we're making a best effort. Is there a timeline that you're anticipating?
I would say we try to accomplish this. I know the chief's trying to bring this home quickly, so I would hope we could accomplish this in the next thirty, sixty days. And there's, there are other models out there with the safety. The police in particular have a number of JPAs and they carry insurance, so this should not be, I don't think it's an insurmountable issue. And I think it's doable. It's a matter of getting people focused in the next few weeks. And again, if it, but if the agencies don't want to buy into that concept, I think the overall good of the authority is, is more important.
Okay. Chief, do you have anything to add, or you don't have to, it's up to you, if you'd like?
Just a quick underscoring what this is. This is really important in that this is related to focused energy of training in the region. We have thirty fire departments. These fire departments form what's called the Los Angeles Fire Chiefs Association, or LAFC. We've been extremely successful in the grant world, getting homeland security grant monies to fund training. And El Segundo firefighters have been a direct recipients of hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of training, which has benefited our department and deployment, our deployments. What we're finding is grant monies are drying up, and so we have to come up with alternative solutions in which to support training, and the JPA is the model moving forward. So there is risk associated with this, certainly with any JPA formed, but quite frankly, the risk is doing the training that we're doing today. And so we did, I did talk with the attorney today. I understand the concern with indemnification and liability. Each department is standing up in the next several weeks to a month or so, they'll be adopting the JPA independently. We'll have a meeting, we'll bring all the members that have joined the JPA together, and we can certainly have that conversation. And if there's a will of the group to go to a separate indemnification insurance policy, we can do that.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. All right, Dr. Brand, item thirteen.
We need to vote on that.
I don't think we need to vote. We're just deferring it, right? Or are we pulling?
No, no, it's actually for a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, Carol. Okay, so you want to read that since you polled it?
Sure. Well, it's consideration and possible action to approve the joint powers agreement for the Los Angeles Regional Training Group adopting resolution supporting the El Segundo Fire Department's membership within the RTG Authority and the authorized city manager to execute the joint powers authority. And so the, again-
Could we include a caveat there that it's with this indemnification?
Well, the recommendation from my office is that we attempt to get the authority to get its own insurance so that it's going to be responsible for the actions of the members, but that if we can't, that it move forward in any event, given the, I guess, the greater good of what's trying to be accomplished. I don't know why there would be a lot of pushback on getting its own insurance. And I, again, from looking at the other authorities out there doing safety-related issues, it shouldn't, shouldn't be cost prohibitive or difficult.
They, I mean, they share the same risks that we do, right?
Right. And I've just been in, over, you know, from time to time, we do get into these inter-agency disputes, and they're just really difficult because the agencies all work together. Last thing you really want is everyone pointing the finger at one another if some liability arises, and I've been through a number of these, and a lot of attorney time involved, just a lot of negative time as opposed to just having its own insurance.
I would be more comfortable moving that we approve it, assuming that it does have that, or with the caveat that it does have the insurance, and then if that isn't achieved, then we come back and talk about it at the DIAS. How, these incidents you're referring to that have happened in the past, can you give us a sense of the gravity of those claims?
Little different context, but one was close to twenty million dollars. We had a dispute over a joint exercise involving El Segundo and some other agencies, the several million dollars.
Okay.
So there've been some-
Significant. Thank you. So that's my motion. Have a second?
Second.
What is the motion again?
Motion is that we approve it as, considering that if it has the insurance in place, indemnification for the city, that we, if not, it comes back to the DIAS for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, five-oh. Okay, thank you. Item thirteen, Dr. Brand, this is you.
Thirteen, so my issue here is with the creation of this at-will position with this title. Given that we're in the process of selecting a search firm to help us find a new city manager, I'd like to keep using this title, which we haven't used this or Assistant City Manager for quite a number of years here, until we see who becomes a city manager and what that person's recommendation is. I don't have any problem with the salary range or the other aspects of this. The work being done is excellent, as we've seen every meeting after meeting, but I'd rather not get into this title at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Council comments?
I think nomenclature-wise, the difference between an assistant and a deputy, just a deputy has a confined and specified focus and task, correct?
It's more common for an Assistant City Manager to be the second-in-command of the city and to earn a higher salary than the department heads and, and to have department heads answering to that person in the chain of command, whereas a Deputy City Manager is usually assigned to specific functions under the city manager's office. So it could be a little confusing, I think, if we use the, and, and, Dr. Brand, I didn't understand, if we don't use this title, what would your recommendation be? That it be Assistant City Manager?
No, it wasn't that. I, I think we should stay away from, from both of those titles until we get the new city manager and then bring it up and discuss it.
Oh, I see.
You know, the work's certainly there. It's being done, needs to be done, and the salary, whatever's fair, I'm good with that. It's, I just, since I returned to the council here, we've had a number of discussions of management leadership of the city, and we've always said that we, we didn't think going to an Assistant City Manager, and this title here's pretty recent, was what we should be doing, and now we're looking for a new city manager. That person might want to bring somebody with him or her from, from where they come from. It just, it just seems like it's closing off our option at the wrong time.
Any other comments?
I'm fine with it.
Just by way of context, this, this was identified as a major program area in the early summer, in June of this year, through strategic planning. I was directed to come back with a plan to implement citywide communications, and I reported back that the recommendation was that we create this position with this title under the city manager's office so that, that, that person could coordinate with all city departments, would become part of the executive team, would be responsible for overall city communications, some component of emergency communications, in charge or responsible for our website, our social media, developing a citywide communications plan. And we certainly shared that plan with the council and received the support, and I, I realize that people can change their mind, but that's how we got to today. So staff's recommendation is that we move forward. The, it is true that I am planning on retiring about nine months from now, and you will be selecting a new city manager. That city manager can decide on a, on a different structure. He or she can at that time. We feel that this is a, a good structure for the city. We have not recommended in the past that we bring on an Assistant City Manager just because of our financial situation.
I will move approval of item thirteen.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, four-one. Thank you.
I think Dr. Brand's point is well taken, though, as we move forward in the search, is that we need to be crystal clear that we are not, that we are not confusing any candidates by saying, "Look, we have a deputy who is in charge of this function, but this is not an assistant who is someone who is going to be, you know, adding an executive function underneath them." I think that that is something that we should be very mindful of.
I agree. And he's, Don's got a great point about, I mean, anytime you bring in a senior leader, which Don has done in the past with superintendents, et cetera, they do want to bring in some of their own people if they can. So nine months from now, who knows what's going to happen nine months from now?
Mayor, just briefly-
We know we're going to have a major unfunded liability issue in nine months, as we do know.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to read the title of the ordinance because we didn't waive the reading of it in the-
I was waiting on Dr. Brand to read it, but I'll-
Well, it's an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code Sections one dash six dash four and one dash six dash five regarding exclusions and department heads, and this will be put on the next agenda, agenda for potential adoption. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, no new business reports. Greg, City Manager.
We had an item on the consent calendar, which was a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant from Chevron. I just wanted to publicly thank Chevron for, for that grant. I know we did it at the Champions of Business, but not everybody was there, and this money will be very useful in funding our economic development marketing efforts.
Great, thank you, Greg, and thank you, Chevron. City Attorney.
Yes, the governor just finished, well, in the last few weeks finished signing bills or vetoing them or whatever, and we will have out for the staff and the council in the next several weeks a summary of all of those. And there are some summaries available already, pretty interesting things in there. Again, more housing bills that we will summarize. We have a, I'll mention this just to show sort of the degree of work that Sacramento puts on local government, and, which is hard to understand, but starting in a year, we will have to. As part of a water fund program, and Sacramento's very concerned about water being turned off for people that are economically disadvantaged, there will be a longer time period in which municipalities could not turn off water even though they're not getting paid for it. And then on our website, we're going to have to note how many of those have been turned off. It's a very, I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to be, not sympathetic- It's a very, I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to be, not sympathetic to the people, but it's a very interesting bill in the way that they're attacking an issue, and again, probably now, I don't know what the number is exactly, but there's probably twenty to forty things that we're required to have on our website because of Sacramento, it might be a bit of an overstatement, but not much, and at some point, all of it gets just lost on the screen of information that we're putting up there. But I will have a summary out for you shortly, and again, they've been very busy.
Thank you, Mark. City Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. City Treasurer, I don't see, okay, Councilmember Pimentel.
I'd like to extend some thanks to El Segundo Girls Softball and the El Segundo Little League Volunteers for the Drake Walker benefit. I think all of us that attended that, that was a, in many ways, a moving display of all the great things the city can do as a body of volunteers, you know, Kim Crossett's team, and, and Matt McMillan, and Dean McGlaughlin, everybody from Girls Softball, and Ted Lappi, and the Little League coming together with Chevron in the park, the Lakers making a tremendous appearance, it was a really, really neat, neat thing, even though my cornhole team was terrible. But, so special thanks to all of them, it was a great day out there.
Thanks, Chris, and if you ever want to match, you can take on Carol and I, we're equally bad.
We're not very good.
Councilmember Nickel?
I just wanted to update the public, and I guess all of you, that Councilmember Pimentel and I have made the commitment to get on a red-eye tomorrow night, get on a plane at eleven-thirty PM, we arrive in Orlando, Florida at six-thirty AM on Thursday, and we're going to tour two facilities and fly home on the seven-thirty flight on Thursday night. So our commitment to the city, as, as Chris put it, we are threading a needle in our calendars to make it work, so that we can see it with our own eyes and taste it with our own lips and come back and report back to all of you.
And that's for the, the Lakes?
That's the Lakes Task Subcommittee, the two of us are on.
Thank you, appreciate that very much.
Just for clarity on that, Orlando is the only place that has side-by-side facilities, and hence the, the cross-country flight, they're both new constructions, so we think that that's where we'll get a sample size that is most indicative of what we would be seeing here at the Lakes, and then it'll be somewhat of a competition to see who smells worse on the return flight.
All right, thank you for the, that visual. All right, Councilmember Brand?
Pass.
Thank you, Don. Mayor Pro Tem, first take.
Yes, want to thank, once again, thank all the volunteers, like I said, you really make our community a true community, and we couldn't have done, we couldn't do what we do without you. I wanted to say that we had a subcommittee meeting on the aquatics center, for the aquics facility, there's been, it, you know, it's still moving forward, but the, we're planning on opening it in sometime in December, and that's all I have.
Bless you.
Bless you.
She's going around tonight. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Old building.
The only thing that wasn't mentioned already was that there was a great event at El Segundo Museum of Art, Matriarchs, check it out if you haven't already, it opens Saturday night, and thanks for all they do to make the community that much more vibrant. And we're going to go back and do public communications.
Hello, Mike Robins, y'all know me, thirty-five-year El Segundo resident and a thirty-year El Segundo homeowner, and a former El Segundo City Councilman. I want to talk a bit more on the, on the protest ballot process, it's ongoing now for the new trash collection fee, and I'd like to ask the city council to have put up on the city website in a prominent location, the phone number for the city's consultant that's handling those ballots, because that's the phone number that people will have to call ultimately to get a replacement ballot if they do not have one, and as I mentioned earlier, it would, according to the consultant, it will take ten business days, in the worst case, to get a ballot sent to someone, and the deadline to turn them into the city clerk's office is coming up soon. So also, if people are watching this meeting and they don't have their ballot, which is where the phone number to call to get a replacement ballot happens to reside, then they should call either the city clerk's office in El Segundo, or they can call Jasmine Allen at three-one-oh-five-two-four-two-three-six-five and ask for the phone number for the city's Proposition Two Eighteen Protest Ballot Consultant. Then call that phone number and ask for a replacement protest ballot, and get that completed and turned in as soon as possible. This water rate, excuse me, water rate increase, this, we've already had lots of those, this new trash fee comes at a time when there's a lot of other tax increases on the ballot. There's only one tax reduction, you almost never see a tax reduction on the ballot, there is one, actually, that's Proposition Six, which, although it was very dishonestly worded in the ballot title and summary by our state attorney general, who's very biased, that is actually going to repeal the recently enacted gasoline tax increase, so it just puts us back where we were. But other than that, there's a whole bunch of tax increases on the ballot, there's the school bond measure, ballot measure ES, which, when you add in the interest and the, the commission, sales commissions for those bonds, it'll probably be about one-fifth of one billion dollars, about two-hundred million dollars, usually it's double, the total cost with interest and sales commission, so the bonds is typically about double what the, what the original indebted amount is that's being borrowed. And also, that ballot measure actually violates the state election code, because it does not specify the term of the bonds, usually you see, you have to see like something, according to state election code, like it'll be for thirty years or forty years, fifty years, that's not in there, that's a violation of the state election code. Also, the ballot title summary is supposed to be impartial, it's not at all impartial, it reads like a campaign ad in favor of measure ES, and that is also illegal, it violates the state election code. So, there's a bunch of other bond measures and tax items, a bond measure is a tax line, basically, it raises our taxes, and renters pay increase in property taxes because that's the cost of doing business the landlord has to pass on to stay in business. Okay, anyway, so I wanted to mention a few other things, there's a, a very important website, it's called transparentcalifornia.com, some of you actually are familiar with it, and they've done a wonderful job doing much more than I have, because I did public records requests for El Segundo over a number of years to get the city employee salaries and pension contributions and all the other way, different ways to get compensated in detail and added up, and we're shocked with the results, and I helped spread that around town, quite literally, in terms of flyers on people's doorsteps or doorknobs. But anyway, Transparent California does that statewide, so they have the salaries and compensation as well as the pension amounts that we're paying out to retired public employees for cities and counties and state government employees, for the University of California, for all the colleges, universities, for the school districts, you can look up the El Segundo Unified School District there and see what we're paying the teachers, administrators, and it's just totally shocking. So just for example, I was just looking at it on my cell phone while I was sitting here during the meeting, and it turns out in El Segundo, we have one employee, police lieutenant, that had total pay and benefits last year, so in twenty-seventeen, a fourteen-hundred-and-thirteen, four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. We had fifteen, another fifteen, police and firefighter employees that were compensated, that had total pay and benefits between three-hundred-two-thousand and three-hundred-eight-eight-thousand for that year. After that, we had yet another fifteen police and firefighter employees who had total pay and benefits ranging from two-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars to two-hundred-ninety-nine thousand dollars last year. I looked up Kevin Ream, who used to be an El Segundo fire captain, so you have firefighter, next level of fire engineer, third level of fire captain, and above that battalion chief, then fire chief, just to give people an idea where fire captain resides, and it turns out that Kevin Ream was also president of the fire union, and he got a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars in his pension last year, we paid for it, we're still paying for it, we're going to pay for it as long as he's alive. This is totally unsustainable, it's not fair to raise fees and taxes on residents and businesses for these unsustainable pay and pension increases, city council members, current and past, handed out after they got a lot of money and campaign support, either directly or indirectly, as independent expenditures.
Mr. Robbins, that's, you're thirty, thirty seconds over, thank you very much.
Thank you. What did he charge you for it?
All right, any other public communications? That we are closing, we are not going back into closed session for a change.